Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Welcome, Fudge Allegiance. Fudge Allegiance. By the United States of America. I would please approve of minutes of February 2nd, 2016. Kerkowski make a motion to approve of February 2nd, 2016.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Under recognition, we have the honor of being at the Chambers annual dinner and handing out some awards to businesses that won their annual, both the President's Award and South City Chamber of Business of the Year Award. We're lucky that the Black Bear Barling Group, item number five, won the Business of the Year. Tremendous company, been around Oak Creek for quite a while, and so, self-business part there off Ryan, and the crucial family that's a big shout with that. I'm not going to read the proclamations, we were able to present the five happy even happy award. And the other one, I just wanted to mention as well, the Garden District and Neighborhood Association on the south side of Milwaukee. There was two other businesses in Oak Creek that also were honored, and mentioned that was Quick Trip, there's four locations in Oak Creek and Franklin, and then Bob Kilby's American Family Insurance Office on Holland Avenue wanted to hold his award. So congratulations to those folks, and the tremendous businesses that we have in the city of Oak Creek. Moving on to business, item six is a motion to concur with the Board of Health Recommendation to approve a City of Oak Creek participation in the 2016 Environmental Health Consortium Memorandum of Understanding and the Recommended EHC III Fee Structure. We have representatives from our health department, South Milwaukee Health Department, Cudahoula Health Department, and Alderman Kerkowski is asked to speak on the issue first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to ask that the council hold this item until the March 15th common council meeting, and the reason for that is, at the meet, at the special board of health meeting that we recently had, the, some of the issues that we talked about, and albeit I was, I left early before the vote was taken, the documents that are in our packets tonight are identical to what we had at the special meeting, and they lack a few of the important matters that, that we talked about and, I believe, voted, voted on at the meeting. So, I mean, I can, one of them was just a paragraph in the memorandum of understanding, and understand that, that could have been corrected tonight, but, lack of advance notice to everybody, I didn't think was fair. And then there was a, an item in the fee structure where we talked about identifying the first reinspection, second reinspection, and third reinspection fees, and having that listed in the item for the fees, and that wasn't there. So, what my, although they're here, and they can answer any questions that the council may have, our intention, I believe, would be to just bring it back to the board of health meeting on March 3rd, make sure that we have all our ducks in a row referencing what we voted upon, and then coming back at the meeting, the March 15th meeting, for the vote. So, that would be my request.
Yeah? Alderman Verhaelen.
No.
Alderman Toman.
Nope.
All right, let's hear from the group, any comments you want to make to the alderman's request, or to the issues that he brought up?
Can you hear me? Hi. Okay, so.
Can you identify, just for the record?
I'm Jack Yobi, Public Health Administrator for the city of South Milwaukee, and just to follow up on Alderman Kerkowski's statement, we did add in the memorandum of understanding draft, a note, there was some discussion at the board of health meeting about our, the municipal contribution, and we did add a note that the municipal contribution for the city of Oak Creek shall remain at the current contribution level until 2018. In the third quarter of 2017, the usage of the program will be evaluated, and the municipal contribution will be adjusted as needed. So that's the change that we made to the MOU, that's different from your packet. And then, the fee schedule was discussed, and we currently have a reinspection fee policy that does outline what that fee would be, but, the request was that we put it in the fee schedule. So it's consistent with the rest of the fees that we have.
Okay.
So those changes will be made.
Thanks for the explanation. Anyone have heartburn over the 3:15 date, March 15th? No? They're shaking their heads, no? Go ahead, city administrator.
Your Honor, just for the, for the council, so that they can get through the materials and have a good opportunity to look through those, was presented to the board of health, there was a PowerPoint presentation that's in the council's packet, kind of gives the history of where the consortium was, and I think that's useful information. There was information about the permit and license list, so it really goes through the various permits and licenses that are issued in each of the four communities that would be participating, the staffs did a nice job in compiling all that information. And then, there's also a fee schedule, there's, there's a budget for the consortium, so an entire budget, most of which is paid by the fees that are collected, and then there's some general fund contribution, of which we have a little bit over $27,000 participate in. And then a fee schedule, and that's probably the most complicating and confusing part in this packet, there's the existing Oak Creek fee schedule, there's what's called the EHC fee schedule, that's the current consortium fee schedule, and when we got together with the consortium, there was an agreement that it probably made sense to take fees from both, that each of us had in our own ways, some unique ways of doing things, that the other felt, oh, that's a good way to do it, so we learned something, just like when we did dispatch. So, as a part of that, there was actually an EHC III, which is the recommended fee schedule, which is a blend of the fees from both, the existing Oak Creek fee schedule and the existing consortium fee schedule. And, that's not so readily apparent when you get through the packets, but I wanted to make sure we pointed that out for the council. You have a couple of weeks to take a look at this, and if you have any questions, certainly, and in our health department, or myself, or others can answer those questions.
And just so there's no concern from the other parties, the other communities represented, we believe this is a good cooperative agreement, we think it benefits all the cities, we're glad to, that we're working together on this, we just want to make sure that all of our concerns, all of our health department questions are answered, not just for the group up here, but also for the residents, so, appreciate you coming out. So item six, then, without, oh, Alderman Guzekowski?
Just one quick question, maybe Jerry can answer it. The, the difference in the fee structures with the EH3, these are combined, or static numbers that will be used by each one of the municipalities, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. The EH3 would need to be adopted by all four communities in their fee structures, and it would be then consistent throughout the four communities. That's the recommendation from the health committee, and that was the staff recommendation. There are other alternatives that the city could use, but there would potentially be additional costs to us, for instance, if we kept our existing fee structure, there's a difference in terms of how many dollars that brings in relative to the recommended fee structure.
Okay.
So there would have to be, there, there was discussion at the meeting, that it didn't make sense to bring the fee structure, or the new MOU, to the other three communities, unless and until Oak Creek took action, and if Oak Creek takes action, then the plan is to bring it to the other three communities to see what, what they do.
Thank you.
Much like us, they have to incorporate it into a fee structure and the ordinance and so forth.
Okay, so the item will be held pending review by our board of review, our board of health, and our common council meeting on March 15th.
Right, and then I would think it would probably be the end of March it will take to get the rest of the communities through this and take a look at it, and I know there's some concern about time, because they're going to send out in April, I think, the new fee structures that are out there. So, this delay won't be a problem, but I think we need to do it at the next meeting.
All right, and have the city clerk note that that has to be on that agenda. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. All right, item seven is a consideration of resolution number 11682-021516, opposing Wisconsin bill AB 750, repealing of personal property tax and eliminating exempt computer aids. Alderman Gale indicated that the, he thought the state was not going to take that matter up in the current session, is that correct?
Representative Rodriguez indicates to me that that did not make it out of committee for this session, so it's unlikely to be put forth for this cycle.
Okay, and then the city administrator comment on that?
Yep, this is the second year that, considering some change to the exempt computer aids, as well as to the personal property tax, this is a significant issue to local communities, and I think it's good, in fact, if it's dead in the legislature right now, but it seems to me that it may make sense to be on record as opposing this, that would be our recommendation, if the council would be looking to do it, because these things have tended to show up sometimes early in the session, this year fairly late in the session, and it would be good to have a, a position on board. Essentially, what, what the state has been looking at is different ways to potentially eliminate the personal property tax. There's, there's some consensus amongst the business communities, even amongst municipalities, that the business tax is a cumbersome and perhaps difficult tax for, for businesses to achieve. The problem is, if it's eliminated, that's a potential 2.4, 2.5 million dollar loss to us. So, the position that, that we've taken, and other communities have taken in the past, is there's a willingness to look at the personal property tax, if the dollars that are being collected through there, are somewhere collected through the person, through the real estate property tax and not lost. So what this led, what this resolution does, and it copies one that our city to the, to the west Franklin had done, it indicates that we're in opposition to the elimination of the personal property tax, we have $108 million in personal property tax, citywide that generates a little bit over 2.49 million dollars. They were looking to eliminate that, and potentially also eliminate or phase out the computer aids, which for us collects another $101,000, some of that in TIF districts, some outside of TIF districts. So, you know, if it was the council's pleasure to put this on record, and should this appear in future legislative sessions, from a staff basis, we feel that we could send this to our legislators right, right away, as well as to the league, and indicate that the council's been in opposition to this, and then we could wait to update the numbers for whatever would be introduced that session. So to me, because it's been out there a couple of years, if the council has a position on that, I think I would recommend looking at this and possibly passing it, so we can send it on and have it on record.
Okay, any council input? Alderman Gale?
I would concur with the city administrator, I think it's important in fact that the state continues to try and, although it's a good intention, they provide no relief to the city in terms of budgetary concerns, or if you create a hole here, not only will there be, have to be service cuts considered, these taxes, if in fact you don't decide to cut services, these taxes will be borne by residential taxpayers. So, it is strictly a shift in, in how the revenue is going to be collected, and it'll go from small business owners to residents. So, it's an important consideration unless there's relief granted in the law, and right now, the both, the past sessions neither provided relief other than some extended, extended timeframe to actually install a legislation.
Okay. No other questions, motion on seven.
Gale, we'll move to approve resolution 11682-021516, opposing Wisconsin bill AB 750, repealing of personal property tax and eliminating exempt computer aids.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
No.
Item eight is a consideration of resolution number 11681-021516, it amends resolution number 11679-020216, rescinding resolution number 11515-072114, and restates public depositories for the city of Oak Creek. Bridget.
Hello, you saw this resolution at the last meeting, unfortunately, I neglected to change the resolution date in about three spots within the body of the resolution, which was noticed after the meeting. So I apologize for that, it has been corrected, assigned a new resolution number for our records, and brought back for you, nothing else has changed.
All right. Any questions? Motion.
Kerkowski will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11681-021516, amending resolution number 11679-020216, rescinding resolution number 11, excuse me, 11515-072114, and restating public depositories for the city of Oak Creek.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
No.
Item nine is a motion to authorize the city administrator to sign a proposal from ZSLLC in the amount of $10,700, and to provide for contractor assistance up to $7,500 to perform a building envelope investigation for the police department building located at 301 West Ryan Road in the 5th district. City administrator.
I had props for tonight's meeting, which I forgot in my room up there, but those three props are pieces of copper tubing that actually burst this year, they're actually frozen within the police department because the temperatures had gotten so low in the north side of the building, and burst. Apparently, this is a problem that's been going on since the building was constructed, we have tried to figure out what the problem was, it was thought somehow the HVAC system and, and the heat was inadequate to get to that site, it's turned out that's not the case. We have done whatever forensic investigation we can on a superficial basis, we think there's some air infiltration that's coming in on the north side of the building, so one of the systems, some of the systems aren't working, we have been unable to identify precisely where that's coming in. ZSLLC was the company that the city hired as part of the construction of the fire station in the city hall that did building envelope and roof review, they are very thorough, and we found very good. So we sought their services to help us identify the cause of the cold air. The problem comes in when it's zero, 10 degrees, we don't see it in, in 20-degree weather, which is really strange. But it comes in, it's in the mid 40s, I think the mayor will attest to that, the offices are very cold on the north side, and it's time to get that fixed. So we're proposing to do this work that includes both the forensic investigation, do all of the investigation of the original bid contracts, the installation requirements for the different assemblies that are part of there, and we believe we actually have to pull parts of the exterior of the building off, some of the brick and some of the cladding that's out there, to see what's out there, we think that's where it's coming in, but we've never been able to identify it. So we've got work for the, the ZS, and we've got a contractor here, in the quote, it shows up to 5,000, but I don't want to have to stop the work if it's a few dollars less, so I've recommended $7,500 to pull off any of the, the exterior of the building, so we can identify that. So, we do have dollars in one of our building projects, it's a 2008 CIP project that we still have funds left over, it was where we had taken the, the building for the Public Works Building, and depending on what the costs are, are for the work, there are sufficient funds to do the work that's needed, so we'd like to identify that, we'd like to do it while the weather's still cold, and see if we can't, can't get to the, to the bottom of the problem.
Questions? Alderman Verhaelen.
Jerry, I, I'm not one for taking facades off of buildings if you really don't have to, but, I'm just curious to know if any of the windows, because I know the, the north face of that building has, has got quite a bit of glass, and if there's any deficiencies in the windows, or any deficiencies in, in the way some of those windows were installed when the building was new, and perhaps that could be the problem, because I'd really like to have that checked before we take, start taking brick and stone off the front of that building.
I think Dick has done everything that he can that's readily, and Dick is our maintenance supervisor.
Yeah, I know.
You know, that, that he can to identify the problems, that very well could be from the outside as opposed to the inside. I believe that they have done all of the investigations that they feel they can, I don't know if we've taken moldings off, I believe we have, in terms of the window seals, I could certainly ask him on that, he's on vacation right now.
Yeah, because I'd, I'd be interested to know if, if it's something that was maybe deficient in the way they were installed, and it just took a year or two for it to manifest itself, and, you know, if it's, if it's a window problem, that's a lot easier to fix than taking parts of the wall down and putting them back up, so, just kind of wonder if that would be investigated before we go.
I guess just by, by way of the thoroughness that Dick does, all of our projects out here, he's done everything, he's told me that he can do, without, without a professional in there and without pulling things off, so I've got to take it on that, I don't know the technical, you know, the tech, technical aspects of that.
Okay. Other questions? Motion.
Gale, move to authorize the city administrators to sign a proposal from ZSLLC in the amount of $10,700, and to provide for contractor assistance up to $2,7500 to perform a building envelope investigation for the police department building located at 301 West Ryan Road.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And I note the alderman's comments, we'll do, we'll do that if we can beforehand, if there's any window investigation from the inside, I'll make sure we do that.
All right, thank you. Item 10 is a consideration of resolution number 11684-021516, authorizing the rescission of 2015 general property taxes, the property located at 7070 South 27th Street, tax key number 737-9984-001 in the 2nd district. Marty is here to answer any questions that you might have. City attorney.
Thank you, mayor. The background is in the council report, but it can indicate that what's before you tonight is just that, a resolution to authorize rescinding property taxes for the property at 7070 South 27th Street, this is the corner of 27th and Rossin on the northeast corner. The background is that this bill was issued, frankly, just in error, this, the record is that this property is no longer owned by the owner who was sent the property tax bill, and in fact, this property is owned by the state of Wisconsin. In terms of that background, the state isn't obligated to notify us as a municipality when they take ownership, so as part of our duties and responsibilities, the assessor's office sent a notice of revaluation on or about June 1st of this year, there was no response at that point in time, indicating either by a return undelivered revaluation notice, or that we heard from the former property owner indicating that they no longer own the property. So it wasn't until after the tax bill was issued that a correction has been made by the assessor's office updating the information, and the legal process is just that, with this resolution, it would authorize the city to rescind any general property tax bill that had been issued as what they call a palpable error, and as part of the resolution, this, if you adopt it, would allow the city treasurer to proceed with a chargeback to ask the Department of Revenue to allow us to proceed in that manner, so basically to collect from the other taxing jurisdictions.
So no fiscal impact, just moving it from one to the other?
Well, if the Department of Revenue did not grant the chargeback, then the city could potentially have to pay that tax bill, but the bottom line is, this was tax exempt property.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Melissa, or Marty, Alderman Gale?
Maybe Jerry, too.
Jerry.
There is a chargeback bill in front of the Senator Assembly as we speak, I don't know if this is a pay to wait, see if there's action taken on that, or doesn't it matter at this point?
There is, and our city treasurer responded to the league's request, I just, I think I, I sent that out to folks today, or she sent it out Friday, and I think we go back to 2008, something like that, there's been, and I'm quoting from memory, and I've got it wrong, somewhere between $50,000 and $70,000 that we have not gotten back in chargebacks over the years, because when we've, we've not always been able to collect the money from the other taxing districts when it's made. The alderman's correct that the legislature and the league has introduced legislation to allow that chargeback to take place, so if bill, tax bills are done in error, that we could receive from the other taxing districts, the portion that they received in error. Right now, the city potentially could take the, the brunt or the whole amount of that, depending on the circumstances.
Okay. Other questions? Motion.
Gale, move to approve resolution 11684-021516, authorizing rescission of the 2015 general property taxes for the property located at 7070 South 27th Street, tax key is 737-9984-001.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 11 is a motion to approve the vendor, 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $60,792.21, and 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $953,871.24, for a combined total of $1,000,14,663.45. Finance director is here for questions. Questions? Alderman Guzekowski.
Question number eight, first of all, the, the $44,000 going to the city of Franklin, does that have to? We were, Jerry, go ahead.
What's the question?
Mike and I thought this might come up, so we actually have an answer for this.
What's the question first?
Well, the question is why are we paying Franklin for?
Thanks.
$44,000.
So the total that we've paid Franklin, including that $44,000, is $162,923.11, and that is for our 10% portion of bearing the overhead utilities to underground, so we had had some overtures by Franklin, that that be a 50/50 split, probably two or three years ago, and our response to them, what, they had established the pattern for how those dollars were split on the, Mike knows exactly what I'm going to say here, on the interchanges of 90/10, and they concurred in that, so we're paying 10% of the cost, and that's what that is. So, $162,000 is our portion of bearing all of the utilities along there, this was, I think, the cable company, we had had a gas company, we had electric company previously, so that's part of that, that work.
That clarifies it, thanks, I just have one other question on 16, the installation gate at Bender Park, that's a county park, though, so we, right, no?
It's actually, it, it, at our park, it's part of Lake Vista Drive, we've got closure gates like we do in Avenshine and others, so that if we choose to close those at night, so that's probably, that's listed incorrectly, that should be Lake Vista Park.
Okay.
Good catch, Alderman Guzekowski.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion.
Gale, move to approve the 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $60,792.21, and the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $953,871.24, for a combined total of $1,000,14,663.45.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 11 is a motion to approve the purchase of a Braun Ford chassis ambulance and related equipment in the amount of $197,584, after trade-in from North Central Ambulance. What's your title, Mr. Havy?
Tell our chief.
Tell our chief Havy's here to answer your questions.
A little background, this was approved in a CIP budget for 2016, in the past, we purchased Medtech ambulances, which was a peer subsidiary built out of Indiana, they chose not to build ambulances anymore, so we had to do a little more research in finding a new type of ambulance. Also, Alderman Verhaelen made a recommendation to us to explore a used ambulance, which we did explore, and it, the, the history behind that has, turned out the, the ambulance was in a previous accident, the box was a 2013, there was warranty issues, so we decided to take a pass on that, and I thank Mark for at least looking for us, and we did our due diligence, at least to try to find out if there's anything else out there. But as you can see, I'll let Mike kind of talk to, but the, to the ambulances, but both of $1,014,663.45.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Under fire, item 12 is a motion to approve the purchase of a Braun Ford chassis ambulance and related equipment in the amount of $197,584 after trade-in from North Central Ambulance. What's your title, Mr. Havy?
Tell the chief.
Chief Havy's here to answer your questions.
Little background, this was approved in a CIP budget for 2016. In the past, we purchased Medtech ambulances, which was a peer subsidiary built out of Indiana. They chose not to build ambulances anymore, so we had to do a little more research in finding a new type of ambulance. Also, Alderman Verhaen made a recommendation to us to explore a used ambulance, which we did explore, and the history behind that has turned out the ambulance was in a previous accident. The box was a 2013. There was warranty issues, so we decided to take a pass on that. And I thank Mark for at least looking for us, and we did our due diligence, at least to try to find out if there's anything else out there. But as you can see, I'll let Mike kind of talk to, but the ambulances, but both of them were very close, it's almost like you could have flipped a coin. And we bought demos in, and I'll turn it over to Mike a little bit on the process.
Okay?
We established our committee back in February of 15, and we vetted out different product lines, and we narrowed it down to two Braun ambulances, and Horton. And we demoed at least six of each within the last year in various trade shows, and the salesman came out to each of the respective departments, so our committee members could at least explore and examine all the documents they provided for us with the spec sheets from our previous ambulances with their CAD designs. They were able to just translate our current configuration of ambulances and install it into the new product line. So, it should be pretty seamless.
Good.
And also, too, is our maintenance department was a big player in this of trying to get it as easy to use, and the warranty on this is bumper-to-bumper for three years. So, at least we have three years of clean service in that regards.
Thanks for the good work on that. Thanks for the recommendation as well. Any other questions? Alderman Gail.
Chief, do you have any, is this a new product or product already in service that, you know, we had this ride issues with some of these other...
No, this has been around for a while, and actually, North Central and Horton are both out of Minnesota. They've been around from the '60s. Currently, Greenfield, South Milwaukee use it. Do you know anybody else?
Madison as well.
And they've been using them for a while, so we've had good results.
Good history on it?
Yes, yes. Both actually, either one, Horton, I says, because I think Tulsa, is North Shore, North Shore use Horton. So, it's kind of a little bit of a preference. One of the things that we looked at as a safety feature on the back of the compartment area is that it's more of a sliding door like a minivan, so when we're out in the expressway or Howell Avenue, that that door's not opening out into traffic versus it's a slide, any kind of safety we can capture.
Tom, I couldn't find it handy. Do you have what we budgeted for this vehicle?
$215.
CIP was $215?
Yes.
Okay.
Lots of paint and sirens.
Okay. Hopefully not $18,000.
So, you think it'll be within budget, Tom?
Well, yeah, yeah. There's a little more cost in the changing over the radios. We also use our local vendor for all the decals, and we've been putting on the city locals as we go out and make the change.
Good. Other questions?
No, just a follow-up comment. The ambulance that I did suggest to Tom was a new chassis, but the box was used, and that's where the difficulty came in. And it did have air ride suspension on it, and the chief mentioned to me that they were having a lot of problems with those air ride suspensions. So, the new ambulance I see doesn't have that air ride suspension on it.
That's the big switch, too.
And there wasn't a lot of price difference. That ambulance was specked out in the publication I gave to Tom at about $160,000. But they would have had to get the box repainted, they would have had to put the logos on it, and then you still had a used box on a new chassis. And the air ride suspension was something that was giving a problem, so that's why they left that go and went for new. And it still came in under budget, which is kudos to the chief.
Yeah. Good job, guys. Other questions? Motion.
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve the purchase of a Braun Ford chassis ambulance and related equipment in the amount of $197,584 after trade-in from North Central Ambulance.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman. Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, thank you, gentlemen. Under Streets, item 13 is a motion to approve the purchase of a 2013 CAT M318D wheeled excavator from BT Equipment LLC in the amount of $194,150. Ted?
Yeah, we actually did a considerable amount of homework on this. We started out, this is something that did go through Capital Equipment and was approved.
What was the budget for that?
We originally asked for $260,000, but as we started doing our homework, actually, we reduced our number for CEP and put it to 205. So, because we started seeing some of the pieces of equipment that were available coming off the rental and the lease fleets, we did find a number of them. We demoed actually seven units for the Public Works employees. We looked at a number of others. I do have a chart down here that shows the seven that we demoed. We picked what we felt was, gave us the best bang for our buck. The one that we did select had only 790 hours. Actually, we put about 80 of those 90s on it, so when we started running it, it had about 700 hours on it. This will be a piece of equipment that'll last us considerable amount of time. Our last one lasted us 20 years, and it served us well. We anticipate this one will last us another 20.
Guaranteed?
Ted, could you explain what this equipment is used for?
Yeah, actually, we use this thing, this piece of equipment for a number of things, for putting in pipe, for doing all our covert installations. You'll see it cleaning out ditches up and down the road. We also use it during the winter for cleaning out corners and stuff like that. After big snowstorms, we run it around town, clean out the cul-de-sacs, knock down some of the piles of corners and things like that. Stuff that you really, especially at some of the busier intersections, where you don't want to bring a loader and have them, you know, backing out into like Howell Avenue at the corner of Pute and Howell. So, I mean, the machine gets used all year round.
Okay. Questions? Alderman Guzikowski.
Ted, just a quick question. Your selection committee, who is on there? I'm sure employees and people are going to be using it.
Actually, it was myself, Ralph, Don Vanslow, Terry Moss, and those four of us.
Thank you.
Okay. Terry Moss, class of 76. All right. Any questions?
Just one comment on this.
Alderman Verhaen.
This is another one I really didn't get involved with. I was kind of indirectly involved in. I know Ted did his due diligence on this. If you look, there's one machine that's a little bit cheaper, the Leveer A900. That's actually a smaller machine. Probably didn't have the reaching capabilities for a lot of the ditching and stuff that it's going to be used for, so that's why I passed on that one.
Okay. No other questions? Motion on 13.
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2013 CAT M318D wheeled excavator from BT Equipment LLC in the amount of $194,150.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaen.
Aye.
Toman.
Item 14 is a motion to authorize the Streets, Parks, and Forestry Director to enter into a lease-to-own agreement with First Source Bank for a $50,453.20 for a whacker model, WL37 wheel loader to serve the Civic Center and Drexel Town Square. Ted?
Okay. This is a piece of equipment that we had worked with Wispark. They agreed to reimburse us for this piece of equipment. A number of the things around Drexel Town Square, we need to start doing some of the maintenance on. We identified some of the things that we were going to need to do. Lot of it involves plowing and sweeping, trash collection, general care for the property. It wasn't really feasible for them to fund a salaried position for that, so they felt that something more tangible, like a piece of equipment, would be easier for them to fund. We started looking around. We had some criteria that we had to meet. We'd like to be able to store the piece of equipment here at the Civic Center, and right now, it's down in the garage. So, some of the things we had to look for was the maximum height that it could be, and because we wanted to do all the sidewalks here, it couldn't exceed 60 inches wide, so that limited us to the number of pieces of equipment we could select from. We found this piece of equipment, and we were happy with it. We actually rented it for several months before we decided to even pursue it. So, we do know the piece of equipment, and we've looked around. We would have loved to have found a brand-new one. However, the newer models are a few inches taller, and we wouldn't be able to get it in the garage. So, that was one of the reasons we selected this one. Wispark has agreed over the next three years to reimburse us for the cost of the piece of equipment.
Okay. Cooperation between Wispark and Civil Creek Finance Director?
You'll remember that about a year ago, Ted and I came forward with another lease-to-own for our loader. That was also with the same bank, First Source Bank. So, it's the same process right now, where we'll be making monthly payments over three years. I will then bill Wispark once a year for the entire year's worth of payments to receive reimbursement. This also covers the cost of the whacker, but not the attachments. Wispark has also agreed to pay the attachments in full, and that will be part of their very first bill to me once this gets approved.
And for Ted, what kind of attachments?
We have gotten a broom, a snow blower, a V-plow blade, and a pushbox for it. So, and those attachments are all brand-new.
Is the broom like a sweeper thing?
It is. We plan on using that for like sweeping the trail.
Perfect, perfect.
Sidewalks.
Got a question. Alderman Verhaen?
The attachments, are we in ownership of the attachments, or is Wispark an owner of the attachments?
No, we will be the owner of them.
Okay.
Anything else? Alderman Guzikowski?
Just a few quick questions here. Just in general, have we delineated the difference, who's all doing what at Drexel Town Square? So, the city's doing this, DTS, do they have any crews or services that are taking care of the property, or are all the public streets and roads on us, or sidewalks, I should say?
Yes, we've delineated the different work areas. We've met several times with our staff and Wispark staff in terms of where that delineation is. We're still working on some of the landscaping that's in the right-of-way and the baskets and things like that, to see exactly where that line will be. It is likely we will end up with that work, and we may be able to bill for some of our part-time summer help for that. But, yeah, we know where that delineation is. Everything within the public right-of-way, which are the streets, the roads, are ours. We've switched over, for instance, the street lighting is now in our name effective January 1 of this year, so we've got those costs and expenses, yes.
And then staffing, Ted had mentioned earlier that that's covered under part-time health?
Well, what we have actually, if you remember, DTS has an agreement that has $1.5 million in it over a 15-year period, so we can bill for staff services up to $100,000 a year. And we did fund a full-time position this year that was in part for some of the maintenance within the medians along Howell and along Drexel, but also for Drexel Town Square. So, we actually added a full-time position, and that's partially paid for those revenues that we received. So, we received both revenues on the TIF agreement, and then this equipment under an agreement where there's an operating entity that cares for the collective areas of DTS, recognizing, we've got about 20 years where we've got deferred tax payments for this. So, I think all in all, pretty good arrangement for each of the parties.
Thank you very much.
No other questions? Motion on 14. Alderman Toman? Get your mic, please.
If I'm looking at this right here, we're missing a new model. We're missing the new model by one inch. It's 96 inches. It could be up to 96, and this thing is, the new one is 97?
Correct.
We can't. I mean, I'd rather see a new one than one that's two years old.
Well, I would have actually, too, but...
I mean, we're...
How do you propose to get around that?
No disrespect to Wispark, but they are picking up the tab for this thing.
Correct, and we would have loved to have gotten a brand-new model. Unfortunately, I mean, even with the one that we have, if you pull that down into the garage, it's a little unnerving to bring it in there, and you bounce around a little bit or get some snow on the bottom, we're going to tear the gas pipe or a water main pipe off the ceiling down there, and I don't think we want to do that.
Anything else?
It's about as close as it gets.
Yeah. Yeah, I give you a heads up for doing those kind of measurements. I bought a new truck thinking it fit in my garage, because the salesperson measured it, and she was like six inches off, and now it's parked in the driveway. So, I appreciate that concern.
We actually brought it down there and tried them. The new one will not make it.
Thanks for measuring that. All right. Do we take a ball? All right. We got a motion? All right. Need a motion on 14.
Kirkowski will make a motion to authorize the Streets, Parks, and Forestry Director to enter into a lease-to-own agreement with First Source Bank for $50,453.20 for a whacker model WL37 wheel loader to serve the Civic Center and Drexel Town Square.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaen.
Aye.
Item 15 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11683-021516, a resolution of governing body extract of minutes in conjunction with the master lease agreement for the purchase of a whacker model WL37 wheel loader. This sounds like legal ease for some sort of protection for the city?
It is a quirky technicality of First Source Bank. That's simply all it is. This is, you can see in the attachment, their format of what they want signed, and in order for our governing body to approve it, we have to put it in a special resolution.
Got it.
Just a technicality.
Covering the bases. Motion?
Gail, move to approve Resolution 11683-021516, a resolution of governing body extract of minutes in conjunction with the master lease agreement for the purchase of a whacker model WL37 wheel loader.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And License Committee handed off to Alderman Kirkowski.
The License Committee did not meet prior to the council meeting. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 16, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant an operator's license to the seven individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaen.
Aye.
Verhaen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Kirkowski will make a motion to adjourn. Guzikowski, second.